Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the June meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. We're so glad you're here tonight. Love to see faces in our audience and glad you're here to participate in the workings of your government. We'll begin our evening this evening with an invocation led by Bo-Hauf, our attorney, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you are able, please stand and join us.
Our God and Father, we thank you for being the maker of the universe and all that is in it. Despite your grandness and grandeur, you care about each of us. We thank you, Lord, for this town. We thank you for those who work both on staff and in volunteer capacities, and especially for the Town Council, for all that they do. We thank you for the blessings that this town provides. We thank you for each person gathered here this evening. Now, Lord, we ask your blessings upon this time of meeting that we will take seriously the matters that are to come before the council this evening and that they will act wisely in their decision-making. And then when this meeting is through, take us all home safely. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary for our roll call at the Lewisville Town Council meetings, we'll start on my right with our council introductions.
Ms. Mock.
Jeff Singer.
Robert Green.
Ken Sadler.
Hi, I'm Fred Franklin. A pleasure to serve as a council member.
Very good. I'm Mike Horn, your mayor, and Mr. Smith is excused from this night's meeting. He's out of town on business. Council, one change to the agenda, unless Mrs. Walker has more. Under new business, we need to add 6B, and that is to talk about planning and zoning legal fees. So 6B addition of planning and zoning legal fees. Are there any other additions or revisions to the agenda this evening? Ms. Walker, you're fine? Do we have the same agenda tonight as... We'll see.
As you and I discussed.
Okay. We'll see. Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mock, second by Mr. Singer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good. We have our agenda for this evening. Yes, sir.
If you would, how about recognize our staff members before we jump on into the agenda.
Before I come there? Yeah. I think that's obviously a good thing, because that's not on my agenda to do, but it should be. We are very pleased to have a wonderful town of staff that serves you every day at the town of Lewisville. If I can't introduce them, our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Bo-Hauf, sitting in the back George Hauser with the camera, Mr. Marty Myers is our town planner sitting over there, Ms. Joyce Walker, our town clerk, and Ms. Pam Oral is our finance director. Do we have anybody else with our town here today? In fact, this is just about it. If you ain't here, you're probably not on staff. We do want to recognize Ms. Lynn Hall, who's back there, I believe, with the Clemmons Courier this evening. Very good. And is the gentleman sitting with you with the media or just a good friend?
He's supposed to be in that room.
Okay. Very good. Well, welcome one and all. Our first order of business is the consent agenda. These items are generally matters of routine interest that come before the council. We take them as a group primarily for expediency. However, if any council member wishes to pull any of the items off individually and discuss them, they can do that. Otherwise, our manager will go through them and we'll pass them as a group. Any council member have any items they wish to take off? Very good. Hank, you're on.
Okay. The consent agenda items for this evening consists of Resolution 2016-027 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for April 2016, the approval of council briefing and action minutes from May 5, 2016, the approval of council closed session minutes from May 5, 2016, the approval of council budget meeting minutes from May 5, 2016, approval of council meeting minutes from May 12, 2016, approval of council closed session minutes from May 12, 2016, and lastly, for tax collection, there are two ordinances. Ordinance 2016-024, order to collect 2016 taxes by the Forsyth County Tax Collector, and secondly, ordinance 2016-025, order to collect 2015 and previous year's taxes by the Forsyth County Tax Collector.
Council members, are there any questions for the manager? Ms. Walker, any comments on our tax collection bills?
No, just to let you know that this is something we must do each year to officially allow the tax collector to collect taxes for the town.
Very good. Thank you. No other discussion? We'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? No. Good. The motion, agenda is carried unanimously. Very good. Let me just give a brief introduction or brief explanation here. We have a number of people who are here in the audience tonight, and thank you all for coming. There will be three opportunities to speak tonight to the council. The first one will be a public forum, which of general interest of items that you may want to wish to address the council of, if you'll come forward to this medium podium, middle podium, and give us your name, your address, and hold your comments to three minutes if you would. The second opportunity to speak will be during our public hearing for our 2016-17 budget that we've been holding our meetings on, and tonight we have the opportunity to adopt that, but this is the public hearing for that. So if you're here to speak on the budget, please save your comments for that opportunity. And then finally, at the end of the meeting, for those of you hardy enough to stay with us, we have another opportunity for public comment, should you wish to do it then. This is the fun part on the agenda. When the council and I get to recognize and make presentations to those individuals who have meant a lot to our community and who have extinguished themselves in service to our town, I'd like to first ask Mr. Ronald Hutton to come up. Ron has probably served longer in his capacity with the zoning board of adjustments than I think anybody, even on the council, which is a longevity of service to the town of Lewisville. The zoning board adjustments, of course, is one of our committees and boards that if you have a zoning issue that you wish a variance or you wish to be considered differently, then maybe the planning board has ruled, or if you want some kind of changes that require a semi-judicial hearing, you take it to the zoning board of adjustments. We've been very pleased to have Mr. Hutton serve in that capacity for 20 years. I know your successor is very excited about his stepping into your shoes, but let me just say, it will be tough shoes to fill. Ron, thanks so much for all your service. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, if Emma Dolph and her multitellied father, who's texting at the moment, could come up.
I got busted.
One of our committees is called the Student Leadership Committee, and it's where students in... What's our... Do we have a lower age to get on? Is it...
You just have to be in the sixth grade.
You have to be in the sixth grade through seniors to participate in our Student Leadership Committee. This is an opportunity for our youth to learn about the town of Lewisville, how our boards and committees work, what government is all about, and really what local government is all about, and how we differ in so many ways in Lewisville from many other municipalities. Emma is graduating from our Student Leadership Committee with fulfilling all of the obligations that she had to do. They need to attend a number of meetings, they have to hear a number of presentations, they have to undertake a public service project, so they're quite busy over the course of the year. Emma, I want to present this to you, but then I want to read something else in a minute. Come in here, Dad. And now the cellphone camera, so you can go to Facebook.
Post it on Facebook, of course.
This is yours.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't the only one. Stay after her just for a second, Emma. Let me share with you some information about Emma and why we think she's one of our outstanding young women in town. First of all, she's the granddaughter of a very dear friend of ours and somebody who served the town with distinction on the member of the Town Council, Grady Dolph. And Grady was a great friend, and he was a wonderful council member, and he had a long history of service to this community. And to be able to make this presentation to his granddaughter makes us all very happy, and it's a continuation of public service that Grady started, and of course, Reba, Emma's grandmother and Gary's mom, they were great friends and wonderful assets to our community. Emma is a senior at Reagan High School.
Rising senior.
A rising senior, so you're going to plop in the seniorship neck here. And she's very shy about jumping in to correct me. She is a member of the All-State Chorus, she is a member of the National Arms Society, she is a Crosby scholar for the last three years, which is quite an honor. She's a member of the International Order of Rainbow Girls, which Rainbow Girl Organization.
Okay, you know the Masons? It's like for girls, so sort of, yeah.
Service organization. Wonderful. She's a member of the Winston-Salem Youth Chorus, and they will be leaving later on this month to perform, you know, over a 10-day period in Vienna. Not Vienna, but the real Vienna.
Not over there.
Not over there, but up there. So we are very proud of Vienna. Thanks so much for being here tonight, Dad. Mrs. Mock, Mr. Mock, would either one of you like to join me up here? You want to let Dad do the honors or Mom? Who's going to be the crowd?
Why can't we both?
Oh, come on down. Another one of our graduates from our Student Leadership Committee is Olivia Mock, and I don't know if we've ever had anybody as young as Olivia fulfill the requirements, have we?
I don't think so.
I think you may be the youngest in the trend center. Olivia, of course, is the daughter of Zeke and Sandra Mock. Sandra's on our Town Council, as you introduced earlier. Zeke, as you can tell, is a man of agriculture, because he has a farmer's stamp, but a great family in Lewisville. Olivia, this is a terrific honor. You're constantly amazing. I hear stories about you all the time from your mother and the great things that you're doing, and so we are so proud that you're part of Lewisville. So come on, I do fan. Let's get this shot. Dad, you have your camera for social media?
I know.
Olivia, just hang out here with me just for a second. Olivia will be a seventh grader at Middle Ark Middle School, a product of Lewisville Elementary. Yes, very good. She's an honor roll student. She's the 2014 North Carolina AAU Level 2 State Champion in gymnastics. Amazing. She is a junior volunteer with hospice, and this summer she's going to be doing an internship with the State Employees Credit Union Family House. Correct? Very good. We're awfully proud, because in addition to what our young people do here in Lewisville to learn about the town and our community, they also extend themselves in our larger community, and they learn what service is firsthand, and it's a lesson that carries with them all their life, and it makes us very proud. Thank you, folks. Next, I'd like Victor Brown, and I believe your dad is here. Victor, yes? And your mother's here, too. Please come up. Now, Victor has a reputation of always being the best dressed person in attendance everywhere. Victor, of course, is also a graduate of our Student Leadership Program. You were the chairperson of the last two years. Last one year, okay? Which is quite a deal, because it's an example that he sets for our other students of what you can aspire to. I've had the opportunity to know Victor now for two years, I believe, and I will tell you, ladies and gentlemen, this is one outstanding young man. There is no shortage of pride in service of community in his blood. There's no shortage of accomplishment in his blood. He is a young man of accomplishment, and I'll read some things here in a moment that will give you an idea of what the young man is all about, but we'll go ahead and get our Come on in, Mom.
Yeah.
Be careful, hold it, it's not going to bite you. Very good. Stay after with me for a second, Victor. Now, we hear of students graduating with honors from high school, and that's fabulous, and they are members of honors societies and Crosby scholars, and that is, they are just such students of distinction. Well, Victor is graduating the early college program from Forsyth Tech. What this means is he not only achieved his high school diploma, but he also received not one associate degree, but two associate degrees, one in the arts and one in science. So while the rest of us are trying to figure out how to put our shoes on, Victor has figured out what he needs to do to succeed in life and will do an absolutely outstanding job. Of course, I mentioned he was chairman of our Student Leadership Committee. He is an entrepreneur. He has his own business already, repairing computers.
And cellphones.
And cellphones. Okay, so Gary, you've got the connection here. And to be 18 years old and to accomplish what you've accomplished, you're quite a young man, and we're awfully proud of you. What Victor may not share with you is at the scholarship awards two weeks ago, Victor was awarded, tell me if I'm wrong, $240,000? $270,000 in scholarships, of which he'll put to great use at North Carolina State.
UNC.
Just walk away from that one, Larry. Sorry, for those of you watching at home, UNC, read my lips. Victor, we are very proud of you. You're quite a credit to our community and quite an outstanding young man. It's a pleasure to know you.
Thank you so much.
While I get to do the presentations, and that's always fun for me to do, I'm really representing our council and expressing, I know, the sentiments that they would want expressed to our young men and women and our volunteers like Mr. Hutton for all you do for our community. Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to call attention to one other young man, Ian McCool. Stand up, Ian. Now, if you pause for a minute, and I had to come up here, because my notes were up here about you. Ian is another outstanding young man in Lewisville. We recognize Ian tonight because he has received his appointment to West Point, and quite an honor and quite a distinction. Ian, it looks like you brought your cheering section. Do you want to recognize any of them?
My girlfriend came with me, Dad.
Okay, he's going off to West Point. That doesn't feel real good, does it, girlfriend? Yeah, it's okay. It'll get through it. Ian, we're very, very proud of you. Thank you so much for distinguishing yourself and being part of our community. Mom and Dad, family, you've done a great job with this young man, and it's recognizable. Not present tonight, I don't believe, Alex Porter and Zoya Thompson. Both of those young people also have graduated from our Student Leadership Committee and fulfilled the obligations that they did to be recognized as outstanding student leaders. So once again, join me in recognizing all of these young men and women for all the things that they do. Mrs. Mock, you have a presentation for us on the 25th anniversary.
I do. I'm hoping my driver down there has it going.
Ready?
We're ready. I don't know about the rest of you, but I have been living and breathing the last couple of months. It's the 25th anniversary. If you did not know, our town's been incorporated 25 years, and so I have to show you some promotional material we've already started receiving. Signs that will be posted in and around Lewisville closer to the event, since we have a sign ordinance. And then we roll this out. Get Marty to help me. He helped me roll it up a while ago. We are so excited about our banners. If you haven't noticed, we have the banners hanging up around Shalford Road now. This will be the one at the corner of the square, so we are getting very excited about this. I'm going to let Marty roll this back up, but I have a short presentation. Celebrating our 25 years. Okay, it kind of looks... It's a little fun presentation, because one of the things we've tried to strive for is to have a fun day. We want people to come, enjoy being here, enjoying multiple things that we have going on. We'll have an information desk. We have a time capsule that we're working on, with it to be opened in the year 2066, because none of us will be around, and so it'll be a nice surprise for most of you in 50 years to see what we thought was important enough to be buried in there for our younger citizens. We also have a main stage, and we've changed this up just a tad, but we have letters from home coming to perform. We have a recognition ceremony. We've got the Kraft Brothers, we've got time capsule dedication, and we also have the Fat City Band. If you have not had a chance to hear the Fat City Band, they have a Facebook page, and they have a lot of their demo music on there. We're going to have an area for our volunteers to check in. We're going to have a little VIP area. We have pretty much invited anybody and everybody from a dignitary standpoint, from here all the way to the White House. And we have gotten some responses back, so we're going to have a little place for them together once they get here to be a part of our recognition ceremony. Food, we have food vendors. We're going to have all kinds of food. We took an approach of trying to keep things as much as we could in the community. We reached out to our churches to help us potentially be our food vendors as a fundraising activity for their event, and as of today, we pretty much have all of our food vendors' slots taken, so that's great, that we have that many churches who want to be involved and be a part of the community. We're going to have amateur ham radio stations set up, so you can talk to anybody around the world. They'll be set up on the grassy area along David McKee Street. They all come with their own 18-foot tower. Next to them, we'll have our medical and emergency assistance. With it being in August, it's probably going to be extremely hot. We will have medical emergency standby all day. Along with that, our fire department is going to be offering different presentations in about every 30-minute interval from 2:00 to around 7:30. They're going to offer an opportunity to use a fire extinguisher, they're going to do a home safety, and they're also going to do one other fire safety, things like that. I think he described it as almost like a mini brush fire house type thing. So that's what some of the programs look like. As you start around, what we've done is we've kind of started in the center of the square, and I'm working my way around. On that corner of David McKee Street and Gray Wagon Road, we'll have our community police that will be kind of where they're camped out for the day, not all under the tent. They're going to be spreading out across the park, but they're going to have a home place to go back to. Along with that, our Public Safety Committee asked to be over in that area, and they're going to be showing you some of the things that they, as a board, work on for the town. Across from them, we have the Historical Society. They're going to be set up near their wagon and the Arrowhead. They're going to have badminton. They're kind of further back into period time games. They're going to have some photo ops opportunity, they're going to have historical quiz, and then they're going to have characters from the past appear every hour, dressed in costume. We have arts and crafts and business vendors that are going to line the Gray Wagon Road. We sat out with the intent of 30 spaces for arts and crafts and 30 spaces for various types of business vendors. All of our spaces are full. We now have a waitlist that we have started in case somebody decides to drop out between now and then. Now we're up on North Street. We're having a classic car show. I can now officially announce, in addition to our car show, what we don't have in there is a new slide, is that, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the name Austin Dillon. He's a NASCAR driver. He is also from Lewisville. We will have his NASCAR hand, his NASCAR here for the day. He himself won't be here, but we will have his car, one of his cars, and his car hauler will be up near the car show. We are expecting 25 classic and vintage cars, so the best of the best of the cars. We will have up in the grassy area, in the current multi-area where the trees were, our town boards and our community, our town boards and committees, along with our various community groups, such as Lewisville American Legion, Lewisville Civic Club, Lewisville Area Arts Council, Friends of the Library. And I knew if I started naming, I might forget one. There is a fifth one. But they're going to be up there, along with all of our boards and committees, and I kind of just pulled some little distinctions off there, like the recycle committee will be there, utilities, beautification is a little flower pot, the planning board, but they are creating some very interactive displays to tell you about the work that they do and provide for the town, and these are all of our volunteer organizations. But they are, they're getting pretty crafty, and they're also getting very competitive on what their booths are going to look like. We've got lots of children's activities that are going on. We also have them kind of sporadic throughout the day. We have Pam's son, who is, his credentials is like this long. He is a professional cup stacker. I mean, he has so many world titles and championship titles, I mean, they just go on and on and on, but he's going to be there demonstrating some cup stacking and giving some kids an opportunity to try to come back. He's just amazing to watch videos on YouTube. We're going to have a magician, we're going to have somebody doing some balloon art, we're going to have a hula-hoo presentation, we're going to have a juggler, but also we're going to have some face paintings, some colorings, some bubbles, kind of very interactive activities for the kids also. Okay, that's the end of this slide. Part of what's happening with our children's activities and some of our setups, we have gone out and solicited the help of some very special junior volunteers. We have our Boy Scout troops, our Girl Scout troops, our American Heritage Girls, and our own Student Leadership Committee has come on board to help us with various activities throughout the day. Some participating in our children's area as the face painters, to our Boy Scouts, who are going to help take out the trash and help set up vendors, help take down things, and Student Leadership is going to help with jar painting. They're going to help move out back and forth between some of the different acts. But we just have a whole big day planned. Now, we do have a rain location, in case it rains. We have been given the school, so we'll have an opportunity to go over to the school if it should rain, but we are not using that word in our vocabulary. But we hope that you'll come out, and if you would like to be a part of it, we still need volunteers. It's coming together, but we can always use extra adult hands if you would like to come out and help be a part of that day. We can find you a spot. Just reach out to myself or call Town Hall and ask to speak to Joyce. Stacy will help you, too, at the front desk, but one of us will get back in touch with you about the volunteer opportunities. Okay? Thank you.
Excellent. Terrific. Excited about the interactive displays, and I particularly want to see what our sewer committee is going to do. committee is going to do.
What they're doing.
Thank you, Sandra. There's a lot of work, obviously, that has gone into this, and it's gonna be a terrific day for Louisville, and I hope all of you will come out and be part of it. It's gonna be pretty spectacular. This is the first public forum opportunity for our residents to address the council on any issue or matter that you wish to share with us. This is our opportunity to listen to you as you present. I have one person signed up that it wasn't necessarily necessary to sign up, so if you're here to speak, I'll start with Mr. Steve Bissett. And Steve, after you're finished, any of the rest of you that wish, come up, come up, give us your name, your address, and your comments. Thank you, Steve. Right here, yes, sir. Face us if you would. Yes, sir, please.
I'd like to, as I'm dressed, thank the town and the council for the support in hosting the bicycle race as May 24th and 25th out here in our community. On behalf of the cycling community, which I'm a member of, I think it's a real positive for me especially, on a personal note, as I ride the race route almost all the time, three to five times weekly. Just came off of it a few minutes ago. From the residential community, which I'm almost a part of Louisville, living out off of Bullard Road, we thank you. From the business community, as a physician at Novant Louisville Family Medicine, I was happy to sign a petition of support. And also, from the medical community, I was pleased to serve as one of the medical team serving to help with medical needs on the race. That serving, that gave me a little inside scoop. I worked the finish line in the medical car on one of, on a couple of the races. I was really pleased with what I saw. Courteous staff organizers and participants. I was impressed with the overall organization. I observed overall cleanliness. I rode the route after the ride. I found three bottles and added to my collection, but other than that, in my opinion, there was no more trash on the route than normal. Road markings are out there still, but they are appropriate and they remain useful for current cyclists and cars. Lot of spectators on the route, people who enjoyed watching the ride come by their house. All nice except for one red pickup giving cyclists the well-known gesture. One resident commented that he was blocked from entering his neighborhood after an officer moved from the exit to the entrance, but other than that, I heard good comments. As far as businesses go, the ABC clerk was very nice and said, "You guys were out there, but you were nice, and our customers will come back and see us, don't worry." Understand restaurant concerns. All of our medical team went to the subway and supported them. I've heard some businesses say that their business may have been a little bit down and blocked out, but maybe get creative next year, give out coupons, have curb service. But, that's up to them. Overall, again, I support this great endeavor and thank the town for its involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Bissett. Please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Fran Sehousen. I live at 1230 Oakencroft Court here in Louisville, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself as well as my husband, who is out of town on business. I would also like to thank the town for supporting the bike event. It was a tremendous success. From our point of view, my husband marshaled and felt that there was a few glitches, but overall, extremely well-coordinated. The future bodes well if we can keep this going and become a community that is recognized by the bikers throughout the nation, not just locally. From my point of view, I didn't do that, but I was one of the hosts for the Italian biking team that was here in Winston-Salem. In fact, all of, there were four homes in Arbor Run that hosted the 12-member team, and I can't say enough about how wonderful they were and what a wonderful, positive experience it was for all of us, and that we will work to encourage more families to host teams because it's a tremendous exchange of values for both sides as well as talk about camaraderie in terms of what happens with Facebook and explodes afterward. I think that we just need to push it a little bit harder and make an effort through social media and through other communication methods to do this again and again and again until we are recognized as being just as much a part of the whole Winston-Salem Cycling Classic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Michael Berry. Live on 4300 Williams Road, so I'm just outside the town limit. I actually competed in some of the races, and I too would like to thank the council and the mayor for their support. It was a great event. We had folks that stayed with us from Charlotte that I raced with. They were very impressed with the city. One comment I've heard a lot of from a number of cyclists was the sheriff's department and how well they executed the race. I'm sure as everyone knows, they had a, they used the entire road, and I've never been in a race where you got to use the entire road, and they did a wonderful job of making sure that the cyclists were safe. We came out in our driveway and watched the races, and a lady pulled over in our driveway and, you know, she said, "What's going on?" Explained to her, and she says, "Oh, this is gonna be great. Watch them come by." And she was like, "That was amazing." And I said, "Well, you know, stick around, there's gonna be more of them." So, I would just, would like to thank the council, the mayor, and the city for their support.
Anyone else? Hey, Jennifer.
I've never done this before. This is a little...
You've done great already.
Daunting. My name is Jennifer Hill, and I live at 201 Turnbridge Drive in Shalford Lakes, and I would also like to speak about the cycling event. For one, I am very proud of Louisville for such great hospitality to the masters and paracycling community. I was one of the individuals in a group of local business owners who worked with our mayor to coordinate participation in the event by our business community. I walked all around when people were here, and I can tell you that we had visitors from all across the United States. I spoke with many from the West, including California, Oregon, Colorado. We had the Midwest and Deep South represented. I talked to any number of Michiganders, I think that's how you say it, and people from Texas, and we had people all from the East Coast, from Maine down to Florida. Everyone that I spoke to viewed this in a, in just a great way. They brought their families who came to support their racers. They also brought, I met one father who had never seen his daughter race before, and he had that opportunity here. At a time when North Carolina is not being viewed in the most positive way, we in Louisville were able to demonstrate a tremendous welcome to these visitors who all seemed very grateful and impressed with our friendliness and willingness to accommodate the inconvenience these events caused. In return, we were given the opportunity to watch their athleticism and courage as they raced. I was impressed that there was an 80 to 84-year-old competitive group. Amazing. I was awed by the efforts of the paracyclists, many of whom were wounded warriors overcoming their limitations to be able to compete. It was inspiring, and we should be honored that we were able to be their hosts. I've never before watched a cycling race in person. It was an exhilarating experience, and I think one that could be an educational experience for our kids. It did change the routine in our town for those two days. A few businesses saw a small increase in sales. I heard many great comments about delicious barbecue. I think if the riders and their teams and families had had more information about what's available in town prior to arriving, the sales might have improved. Other businesses probably lost a little revenue on Tuesday and Wednesday, but they seem to have made that up by the end of the week. Commemorative pottery that was made just for the occasion sold out, so clearly, visitors wanted to remember their experience here. This event, in my mind, highlights Louisville as a cool, progressive, hospitable, small town. The riders talked about it, and they talked to everybody. Even the Winston-Salem organizers asked what we had done because they kept hearing what a great experience the riders had had here in Louisville. I think that's just great publicity. I, as well as the businesses who helped coordinate our participation in this event, strongly support doing it again next year, but with improvements based on the lessons we've learned from this year's experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is your opportunity.
I'm Candy Morris. I live at 360 West Tibbe Drive here in Louisville, and I chair the scholarships for the Louisville Civic Club. And I'm very happy to say that Victor Brown was one of our winners. And he's been in the band, he's done so many different things, a youth pastor, and been on mission trips. And I think there's about 10 other things that I could say that he's done, but on behalf of the Louisville Civic Club, we just want you to know that we too are proud of Victor.
Thank you, Candy.
Hi, Mike. I'm Ken Craven, 416 Roller Mill Drive in Louisville. Sorry for the casual appearance and the little lack of breath here. Just got back from a 30-mile ride. All of the ladies and gentlemen on tonight's ride said, instead of coming in and in sweaty clothes and stuff, they would ask me to represent them. They are not all Louisville residents, but they all consider themselves Louisville residents because they spend at least four hours or more every week in our community. They were extremely pleased with the way the community and the residents and the businesses reacted to a two-day event. There were a lot of absolutely positive events going on, as Barbara can tell you. I think they, not only did she sell out all of her pottery, she actually, I think, if I'm not mistaken, even took orders. So, I've also talked to a couple of other businesses that said they missed a fantastic opportunity. There's a restaurant in town that actually said they missed the boat. They're planning on stepping up to it next year. They're actually going to run a, basically, a satellite restaurant out of wherever the event is held is what they're planning on doing. Don't know if they've spoken to you yet or not about it, but they're talking about it. They're trying to get something done. If nothing else, they're looking at being proactive. I think it's a really great event. All, like I said, all the ladies and gentlemen out tonight wanted me to pass it on through to you guys and let you know that they're in support of this, as well as my, and my wife and I donated time volunteering in Louisville. We also donated time to the event in Winston-Salem as well. I think we're, we've put ourselves on the likes of Boulder, Colorado, been to Oregon, other places like that. We have become a destination for cycling. I think it's time for us to welcome it. We're missing the boat if we don't continue on with where we're at. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak? Going once? Going twice? Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. We have them recorded, we've taken notes, and thank you all for taking time out of your evening to come by and share your thoughts with us. If you wish to leave any written comments, there are forms in the back of the room that you can also do that as well. We're now at our public hearing for our fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, and Hank, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Audience is leaving. Okay, this is, it's gonna be a brief presentation for those of you in attendance, then we're going to open up the public hearing on this. I'm gonna start by just going over the budget message. This budget message had been developed initially when we proposed the budget in April, and now it's being revised and has been revised reflective of changes made during council deliberation of the budget. As town manager, I'm pleased to present the proposed general fund budget of $4,201,040 for fiscal year 2016-2017. The budget is proposed includes maintaining the current tax rate of 17.7 cents per $100 evaluation. This budget shows an increase in the general fund budget from previous year budget as adopted for July 1st, 2015 of $132,120 or 3.25 percent. This budget is proposed is balanced with $56,870 in fund balance from the general fund. This fund balance appropriation represents the costs associated with projects that are not recurring operational costs. The tax base for the town as of May 2nd, 2016 was $1,246,897,819, producing an estimated ad valorem tax revenue of $2,140,720 with 1 cent of this tax rate equalling approximately The town of Louisville also collects a levy for a municipal service district. The proposed tax rate for the district for the fiscal year 2016-2017 is 4.5 cents per $100 evaluation. This proposed tax levy is unchanged from the current year. Once again, in the face of a challenging economic environment, the town council has been diligent in using sound financial planning to continue its commitment to the citizens of Louisville to provide the highest standard of services. They have done so, done this while maintaining a level of fund balance to secure future funding opportunities. The unassigned fund balance was $3,468,250 as of June 30, 2015. This represents a fund balance of approximately 82.56 percent based on the projected upcoming fiscal year budget for 2016-2017. I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit. Overall, the sales taxes that are gonna be collected are expected to increase for this year. These are, of course, sales taxes that are collected by the state and distributed to us on a local level, and this is due to new sales taxes imposed with services dealing with repairs, installation, and maintenance, but there has been no analysis of the expected revenue gains from these new service sales taxes. It is not certain that the expanded sales taxes will be enough to make up for anticipated loss from the change in the distribution formula. The state changed the method for distribution of sales tax, and to some degree, it may hurt certain communities and to some, it may help. For town services, the town of Louisville stays committed to the continuation of all of its existing services for the upcoming fiscal year to include parks and recreation, financial administration, administration, planning and zoning, public works, residential garbage and recycling, stormwater management, community policing, and beautification. All services are proposed to continue at current service levels for the upcoming fiscal year. As a continuation of our formal relationship with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities, we are currently completing work on our new sewer master plan for the town. This plan is necessary for sewer services to grow in the town corporate boundaries in the future. Over the upcoming fiscal year, we will be engaging in planning activities related to anticipated sewer expansions in the basins of Tomahawk and Reynolds Creek. As far, as we all know, the town has a number of capital reserve funds. Currently, annual appropriations to these capital, to these funds total $275,000. The town will continue its transportation planning for the Great Wagon Road, or GWR. The GWR represents a commitment by the town to invest in its own future by providing for areas of planned commercial expansion as well as mitigation of future traffic increases through the core of the town in the future. In the past, the town has invested in this endeavor by engaging in right-of-way acquisition and planning activities. Funding for all capital reserves is proposed as follows. Stormwater capital reserve, $25,000. Great Wagon Road right-of-way reserve, $125,000. Sidewalks, bike paths, greenways, capital reserve, $25,000. And lastly, municipal buildings and land capital reserve, $100,000. These, again, total $275,000. For capital projects that remain in the budget during the 2016-2017, they are as follows. Active projects are the Shalford Road-Williams Road Roundabout, Louisville-Viana Sidewalk Project, the Great Wagon Road Development, Design and Construction, Stormwater Repairs, and the Capital Project for Harper Road Lift Station. Non-active projects are the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility and Playground Expansion. New projects, the town is expected to begin a new transportation project in the upcoming fiscal year. fiscal year. This project is referred to as our Gateway Project. It will be a roadway project to make improvements from the Highway 421 interchange on Williams Road with improvements continuing on Williams Road between the interchange and the newly constructed roundabout Shalford Road and Williams Road. This is a project utilizing STPDA funds. The project will be a multi-year project involving engineering, right-of-way easement work and construction. This project is estimated to cost approximately $1.5 million. The project will be paid for with 80 percent of the expected costs coming from the federal aid, coming from federal aid with 20 percent match from the town. The town's contribution in its 20 percent match is expected to be approximately $298,936. After formal approval of the Winston-Salem Urban Area Transportation Advisory Committee, the project is expected to get concurrence from the NC DOT State Transportation Board sometime in July with official implementation of activities expected sometime in the month of August. Staff is expecting the creation of a new capital project ordinance to come as early as fall 2016. In conclusion, this budget reflects the desire of the, the desire of council to address the needs of the town while being cognizant of economic conditions. Choices made and expenditures were done to meet the priorities and goals of the council established during the year and with the assistance of numerous advisory boards and committees. During the next week, well, I'm sorry, this has already happened. We did, over the last few weeks, go and participate in a number of workshops with the council to deliberate, deliberate and propose and finalize the budget that you'll have before you this evening. I would like to thank the staff for their assistance with the development of this budget and to the Town Council for their continued guidance and support. And then we're here this evening for the, the budget public hearing.
Thank you Hank. Staff, before we have the public hearing, any questions for our manager? Once again, as the manager said, we've had a series of budget workshops of, on this budget over the last several months. We've gone through it and examined it very closely. I believe I speak for the council when I say there's not, there's not a lot of fat in this budget. In fact, if you can find the fat, we'll, we'll put it on a diet. But we've, we've done, I believe the council's done an exceptionally good job in their making the appropriations in the, in the appropriate places and being judicial with the town's and the taxpayers' money and serving the needs of our residents. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak this evening on the budget proposed for 2016-17? Please come forward, state your name and give us your address. This is the public hearing on the proposed budget. First call? Second call? Third call? Very good. Public hearing's closed. Everybody's thrilled. Let me just, if I can, for one moment, I'd like to just highlight a couple of things in this budget that, that I think are important. And Ms. Oral will probably chastise me for the terms that I use, but I'm going to try to explain it in the way that I understand. We have an annual budget in the town of $4.1 million, as the manager said. We have general fund reserves. This means money that is in our reserve that is not part of our current budget, but is there should we need to use it, of $4.3 million. We have power bill reserves, which is money in our budget, money sitting there in our reserves, not in our budget to spend, of $700,000. We have utilities reserve, money not in our budget to spend, but in our savings account of $900,000. We have funds and designated project funds, not allocated in this year's budget, but they're in our savings account to spend as we work through those projects, of $2.9 million. When you add those up, you get almost $8.8 million, what I'll call our town savings account. Now Pam's gonna throw something at me, but that's basically funds that we have in reserve that we can use to spend on the town's future. And this is in addition to our $4.1 million operating budget that we, we just had the public hearing on. Counsel, I just want to say, I think we've done a fabulous job and councils before us, I think have done a fabulous job to be able to build the financial cushion that we have to spend our taxpayers' money judiciously and to uphold the vision of the founders of our charter, which is government as large as only the needs of our residents are. And so my congratulations to the council for a great budget workshop session. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
Move approval.
Motion was made by Dr. Sadler. It was seconded by Mr. Franklin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That was a unanimous approval and one of the most important votes we'll take this year. We now have a series of contracts that we need to review. First, Mrs. Walker, I believe we want to talk about the contract with Sir Speedy.
Yes. This is for our newsletter that we publish every other month. And that contract is in the amount of $11,812. And that will be for six publications.
Will entertain, entertain a motion for that resolution? Motion to approve. Mr. Zinger makes the motion. Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion?
Just would ask a question. Is that an increase over the last year's?
As a matter of fact, it's exactly the same.
Hallelujah.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Mr. Hauser, you have the next item on a resolution to approve a contract for yards by us.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Resolution 2016-030, awarding consolidated location of grounds maintenance contract to yards by us. And this is to take care of the grounds maintenance throughout the town for the, all the facilities.
Any questions for Mr. Hauser?
It doesn't have an amount on here, is it?
The reason being, this consolidated like five different contracts that we had in the past. Some of those being hourly contracts. So what I can tell you is that the regular, what I would call the regular grounds maintenance, that contract is $37,430, which is up $1,550 from last year. We have two areas out in Municipal Service District for the dam mowing. That's $1,300 for, for the year. And then for the guard rail mowing, that's $600 for the year. The other two areas are, the, for the mowing is for flare mowing and bush hogging that we do on our right-of-ways. And that's $45 hourly that they have given us for that. And then also for unkept lots, that's a $45 an hour rate for those, as we call upon them.
So when you say consolidate, they're all going under one, rather than have five different contracts, we've got one big one?
Right. And, and one contractor that's taking care of all of this.
You feel like we've realized some savings by, you know, economy of scale generally do that for us?
It's actually close to about the same. I guess the, the advantage of that is just dealing with one person. When something, if something goes wrong, we've got just one person to deal with. So there, there is an advantage to that.
Any additional questions for Mr. Hauser?
I noticed there's no contract in our Dropbox for...
I believe that there was one put in there. It's a, actually a separate contract.
Okay.
But it's, it's in the Dropbox.
Okay.
Right. It came, it came late.
Okay.
And so it's in Dropbox separately, but you can...
That's what's below the other, the agendas. Okay.
Very good.
I hadn't clicked on that one yet.
Any additional discussion?
Well, if it's a consolidated contract, was it bid or?
Yes, it was bid as, as one contract.
One contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many responsive bidders did you have?
I think we had at least three on, on this one.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Zinger, I want to thank you for your suggestion to consolidate the contracts. I believe at our last retreat. And I think you made a great suggestion and Mr. Hauser, great job for accomplishing that. Without entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion. Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Briefly, before we consider our next contract, Mrs. Mock, I'm going to make a motion because you have some, some family connections with the low bidder on this next contract, that we excuse Mrs. Mock from any consideration in the discussion and also for voting on this contract.
Second.
Mayor makes the motion. Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Mock, you're excused from this discussion. Mr. Hauser?
You have before you Resolution 2016-031, awarding plant bed maintenance contract to Mock Landscaping of Lewisville in an amount not to exceed $22,920.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Dr. Sadler, seconded by Mr. Zinger. Any further discussion? I will say for the record, for viewers at home, that council members were not privileged to any of these contract discussions. They did not participate in the context discussions. It was done by sealed bid. The contract bids were opened independently of council and the information was brought to us at our meeting. So we, we are, we are absolutely not involved in the negotiations, nor in the presentations, nor in the opening of the bids. With that, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. That's unanimous. Ms. Walker, new business?
Appointment order 2016-01. We have a request from Robert Gray King Jr. to be appointed to the Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Excellent. There we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Ms. Mock makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Mr. Myers, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is referencing a shortfall that we've had in the legal services budget for the planning department. Our town attorney and staff have been working very, very hard on a number of cases locally. And the legal staff has been working on our behalf with the courts downtown to seek conjunctive relief for at least three of them. And it's those services that have put our budget a little bit in, upside down or a little bit in jeopardy. So we're asking this evening that you consider an additional amount to be put into that so that we can cover ourselves for those fees that we have incurred so far this calendar, this fiscal year. And I'll answer any questions or Ms. Oral can answer any questions you might have along with the town attorney relative to this. But that's essentially what we're asking this evening.
We, we've got a ordinance 2016-026 and it is in the amount of $10,000. We do so because we're in June. That is the last month of the fiscal year. So we've got one opportunity to get this right this time. You can not go too high on a budget amendment, but you can go too low on a budget amendment. So the last thing we want to do is to go into the last month of the fiscal year, have the fiscal year end and then have the final bills come in in July after this fiscal year is ended. So we're hoping that this amount will be a generous plenty to cover through the end of June.
And some of this is recoverable from, I would assume, some of the actions being taken?
A small, a small portion of that may be recoverable in, in terms of civil penalties that may be collected. That's never something we can make a guarantee on, but that's what we seek.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes a motion to approve. Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? I would like to just ask Ms. Oral, Mr. Perkins, you reviewed these charges and you find them to be appropriate and in line for the work that we commissioned through our attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. We have no unfinished business this evening. Mr. Perkins, our events at Shalford Square.
Okay. Moving us through events at Shalford Square. This weekend, on the 11th, Saturday, we do have the concert and this, who can refresh my memory on?
Jen Bostic.
Jen Bostic. She'll be at the square. That begins at 8 o'clock. Moving on to the 25th...
Evan?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the time on the sheet, but it could be that.
That's the reservation time, so no one else is going to...
Oh, okay. All right. Anyway, it is that evening and it is on our, it's been on Facebook as well as our website for details. Moving to the 25th, we will have our second annual street party. And that's going to be a big event. That's going to be from 6 o'clock in the evening through 10 o'clock over a four-hour period. And then moving on to July, Independence Day will be celebrated on Monday. And this is July 4th, and we will have our customary fireworks and celebration in the park. The park is blocked off for the next day on July 5th in case we have a rain, a rain date needed for this event as well. And then moving on into July, on the 15th of July, which is a Friday, we have Starlight Movie Night. I believe we're doing The Wizard of Oz that night. And then on the 23rd of July, we will have our E-Cycle Event at the Town Square. And then lastly, in August, on the 6th, there will be another concert. We'll have other opportunities to discuss that again.
Any questions for the manager on upcoming events?
Do we have insurance for the fireworks again this year?
Yes, sir, we do.
What's our measurable three-tenths of insurance?
I think it's .20 measured at Smith Reynolds Airport.
Very good.
We pray for rain at Smith Reynolds, but not at...
Okay, Mr. Perkins, you have the next one?
All right. Okay. These are, moving on to things that were approved at our briefing and action minute meeting on May 5th. The first was the approval of ordinance 2016-023. We amended the budget ordinance 2015-045 in an amount of $10,500 to fund expenditures for the painting of the water tank. That, that work is underway as we speak, as far as the renovation. We also passed Resolution 2016-026, supporting the nomination of our town clerk for the Clerk of the Year. And then lastly, we had the passage of Resolution 2016-028, updating the town's personnel policy.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, we do take some action at our briefing meetings for those issues that are timely and need to occur at that time. We do report them out here at our public session, well, actually, our briefing session is public also, but at our main Town Council meeting so that you all know the actions that we took at our briefing. We're now to the final opportunity. Those of you that have been eagerly awaiting to speak and address the council on things that might be on your hearts or in your minds. So we'll have the final public forum open now for anybody that wishes to speak. Is there anybody that's been holding back? Very good. With that, thank you very much for coming. We also have forms in the back should you wish to leave written comments. Counsel, comments?
I'd just like to thank Hank and Pam and the rest of the staff for the great work they did on putting this budget together. I'd also like to thank you, Mayor, for leading us through it. We had a few differences, but you seemed to pull us in line and thank you for that. Thank you to council for working on this budget and approving it in the form that we did.
Comments on the right?
My comment says I'm looking for volunteers for the 25th anniversary from council members now. I have a few areas that still need some leadership roles filled to take ownership of some key areas.
And that's smock@lewisvillenc.net. Smock@lewisvillenc.net.
I said council members.
With that, if there's no further business to come before the council tonight, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion. Mrs. Mock makes the second. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being with us tonight. It's always a pleasure to have you. Mr. Brown, always a pleasure to see you and congratulations again. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.